The June 22, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious having followed, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity we can meet for the June 22 Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Lord, as we review all these numerous cases, help us to get an understanding of what the parties requesting and also in opposition will be understood before we leave this meeting. Lord, we thank you for these things, and your name we pray.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could take a minute, I'd like to apologize to staff and my fellow board members for this past meeting and to those of you that might have showed up on our last one for my absence. I had some characteristically liked me where something came up at work that required me to stay there. And I sincerely apologize to anybody that would have affected.
Thank you. At this time, if the members would please read the minutes and consider a motion to approve or correct the minutes from the May 11, 2020 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we print the minutes as written.
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote is unanimous. The minutes are approved. The following are the guidelines for those of you that are going to be speakers tonight. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. For quasi-judicial hearings, and this, all the cases tonight are quasi-judicial, so every bit of hereon pertains. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any special use permit or variance case being heard by the Planning Board must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Please remember that it is expected that many of you will wish to speak about these cases. Once speakers begin, if you agree with an argument already presented in favor or against, please practice courtesy of indicating with a show of hands rather than presenting the same argument again. Groups are also encouraged to send a representative to speak on their behalf. This will allow more citizens the opportunity to be heard. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, the Chair requests a motion from the members to open the quasi-judicial Anybody?
I make a motion that we open to quasi-judicial hearings.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote's unanimous. The public hearings are now open. Staff will now present our first case, number 2020-08.
This is a case for a request for a special use permit to allow a turkey shoot, which has until now been getting permits on an annual basis to do turkey shoot activities, but who would like to conduct those activities more often. And so instead of a, excuse me, a special one-time event, they are now asking for permission to be able to hold these turkey shoots without having a special permit for each individual time. It's a 22-acre parcel located just west of Wentworth, located within the rural land class of the land use plan. As you see, most of the surrounding zoning in the parcel itself is residential agricultural. Turkey shoots and other special use permits of its kind require a site plan to accompany the permit, so the applicant has submitted a site plan that should match the requirements of the special use permit criteria. You have in your packet the criteria for a turkey shoot, spaces, parking spaces, hours of operation. These sorts of operational limitations would be enforced through code enforcement, typically by neighbor complaint if it comes to it, especially with a case like this. As far as the staff review of the site plan, we have determined that all of the criteria of the special use permit standards have been met. So, excuse me, you have four decisions to be made, findings, in order to grant the special use permit. They're in your packet, and they're also in your approval, recommended approval or disapproval analysis and statement at the end of the staff report. Further questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
The nature of the request is to waive or alter the 90 consecutive day permit?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would replace that.
So there would be no limit? Is that correct?
That's correct. They would, no additional notice would be required for them to conduct these activities.
I've got the feeling that this just turns this into a shooting range.
There are differences between a turkey shoot and a shooting range, very clear different standards that we have actually researched to be sure that one is not the other. And there have been some indications from surrounding property owners that they believe it may be that the types of guns and activities could be other than turkey shoot. And so based on that information alone, we will be going out there to look at the site and ensure that it's in compliance.
I noticed in some of the comments that were mailed in that the turkey shoot limits the ammunition used in a turkey shoot to H number eight birdshot.
It is possible for you to impose conditions with the approval of a special use permit.
I also noticed in some of the comments that some unknown party to the person that submitted the comments conducted a concealed carry class out there with handguns.
So those are allegations that we will investigate. Ben and I were just talking about that earlier tonight. And it's really up to you, Paul. I mean, typically, there are two different issues, compliance as a turkey shoot and whether a turkey shoot would be appropriate at that property. Now I'm looking toward the attorney for validation there, but it is two separate cases, a potential violation of the standards versus is if they were behaving as they should. Would it make sense there?
The reason I bring it up is that obviously handgun ammunition has a lot longer range than number eight birdshot out of a shotgun does.
That's right. And it sounds like from those, from the comments that we got, it sounds like it definitely needs to be investigated about whether it's being operated correctly.
And could you tell us how close the nearest residence is to this property?
We had, let's see, 1,400 feet for the intersection. Did we, well, there's a residential property across the street. The activity, the permit activity happens at the rear of the property. You can see here, so.
And is that?
It's less than a quarter mile.
Are the shots fired away from the road?
There's a backdrop. You have this image in your packet.
I think I get you, yeah.
Okay. And it shows the direction of, there it is, this backdrop here.
Yeah, it's got a, there's like a berm, berm there.
There's a berm, and the shooting is in the direction.
Okay.
I want the applicant to answer that question more fully, if you don't mind.
I have lots of questions.
That it's coming from his.
Were the allegations of the handguns or other guns being, were they during the turkey shoot, or were they during just alternate times?
Emily, was there any, I believe that some of the, at least some of the people have signed up to speak, or is that the case? Do you know? Yeah, whatever is either written or spoken is the only evidence that we can consider.
Right. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have a question. Carrie, do we know how long this turkey shoot for the 90 days has been in existence?
I know for several years, but I don't know the exact timeframe. Again, please ask the applicant when they started.
All right.
If there's no other questions for staff.
Carrie, obviously in the county, there's our, there's our firearms. Obviously, a turkey shoot, shooting range are different from that.
As is a private, the private discharging of weapons on private property versus turkey shoot, shooting range, yeah.
So if you had people, I guess I'm just trying to distinguish if you own a piece of property and you get together every week, you have a shooting. Is there any restriction on that?
It's sort of the, there is a temporary use, permanent use metric in planning, and unless it's something that requires a one-time event, a temporary use or seldom a used use is the same, has to meet the same standards of one that's used every day. So the, whether it's a, unless you were to impose a specific condition on a request, there isn't, there isn't a metric for that.
Carrie, do we have his 90-day timeframe?
So the special use permit, here we go. You have the first page, the second page of your staff report has the 90 consecutive day standards. And the next page, HH turkey shoot. Is it on the other side, Julie? Paul, if you see it, maybe not.
Yeah, but what I don't see is the dates.
We can get that from the applicant.
Yeah, all right, that's what I need to.
Carrie, could I have the sign-up sheets to call the speakers? Put that hammer away before I hurt somebody. Is Mr. Chuck Bailey here? Please come forward. Before you go to the podium, we need you to go to one of the bibles there on the shelf, on the rail. Put your left hand on the bible, raise your right hand. And bear with me, a lot of paperwork. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, you can take the podium now. And for the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Chuck Bailey. I live at 345 U. Lebanon Church Road. I am the owner and incorporator of Rockingham Family Charities, which operates the main event of a turkey shoot. We run our turkey shoot from September through December, usually from Labor Day till December 24th or something like that. We've been in operation since May of 2016, and what I'm doing here tonight is asking for a request because from September through December, we compete with football, racing, and hunting. And most of the other turkey shoots around the other counties and some of the states, they have a break, a Christmas break, and then they resume for a couple more months during the winter. Turkey shoots are for wintertime. That's what most people do for them. The purpose of this turkey shoot is we raise money to give to families, needy families. We have a, the Old Bethany School cafeteria. We have a little closer in there. We teamed up with Wrangler Jeans. We give away free clothes, brand-new clothes. A small food bank and the money that we raise from the turkey shoot, we buy kids backpacks, whatever they need, hygiene products, underwear, brand-new shoes, whatever they need, and whatever we can make on the turkey shoot. Another reason we're trying to extend, if we could, for the timeframe of the turkey shoot. Hours of operation that we run are Friday and Saturday night from 7:30 to 10:30. We use 410, 16, 20, and 12-gauge shotguns. No long rifles, no pistols, but they're not even allowed on the property. This is a family event too, by the way. We do not allow alcohol. We don't allow vulgar language. Main thing is to help these kids that need help. So our shooting range is covered where the shooter shoot, and they shoot at 90-foot distance. We have a berm that is 70 feet, 75 feet wide, 15 feet deep, and 20 feet high. So that's what we shoot at. We use, we use number nine shot, which was approved five years ago, four years ago. And I know the states, or I mean, the statute states that it's a number eight birdshot, but a number eight birdshot at 90 feet, you don't know where to hit the target. So that's why we do that. So that's basically everything right there, real quick. Be happy to answer your questions.
Julie, did you want to answer?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Bailey, you just stated that you are a charity. Are you designated under the 501(c)(3) IRS code?
Yes, ma'am.
And under that code, can you, or as a charity, can you tell me, and you provide services to needy families, and this is the main purpose of this?
That is correct.
Can you tell me approximately how much money that you give to these charities or to this specific charity?
We average about $5,000 a year.
I don't think that's got anything to do with this granting a zoning permit, how much money they make.
Well, it's how much they give away. So anyway, and that will help with my decision. So you're asking to go year-round with this request, correct?
Right, with the year-round. We're definitely not going to do this year-round, but what we're trying to get is like from September through March, you know, that time.
So you're not actually asking to go 12 months, you're asking to go six months?
Well, yes, we're asking for 12 months because we might have a situation where we could raise a bunch of money during the summer or the fall or something like that earlier, so we'd like to leave that open.
And you say that your hours of operation are from, it's Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 7:00 to 10:00?
We usually start 7:30 to 10:30.
Okay. And that's just in the evening?
Pardon me?
It's just in the evening, or?
It's just on Friday and Saturday nights.
Okay, so it's 7:30 PM to 10:30 PM?
7:30 to 10:30.
Okay. So we'll have to clarify that because the ordinance requires you to shoot in a later than 10:00. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And how many people normally come to your turkey shoots?
Gosh, that's a loaded question. We probably average, I can give you a better number of money, but we average probably 25 people a night.
25 people? And all, do all of those people shoot?
Do all of them shoot?
Yes.
No, some of them come and socialize, and we, you know, we also have children's situation that every child that shoots, we give them a trophy. Of course, we have rules and regulations for that. They have to be with their parent or guardian, and the parent or guardian has to be with them at all times. So not everybody shoots, but the majority of them do.
So on any given night, on a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, how many of these 25 people, say your average would be shooting?
I'd say 20.
So 20 people shooting for three hours?
See, a lot of these people come in for families. You may have three people in a family, you may have 10 people in a family. Not all the family members shoot.
And is the shooting continuous, or do they all, does like one person stand and shoot, or is it like continuous?
The procedure, the only way we do that is we have 12 shooters, and they can shoot anytime they want to, but we have that separated from everything else. They walk into this area, they're issued a shell, and they have their own gun, or we have guns that they can use too, depending on what they use. And they walk over to the target that they bought, and they shoot. And when they get through, they put it up. We check, make sure that they have shot that shell, and then the targets are judged, and the winner gets $10. That's how we do it. Or a $10 prize.
So you give away cash prizes?
Pardon me?
You give away cash prizes?
I didn't quite understand that.
Do you give away cash prizes?
Yes, if they require it, we do. $10 is the maximum we give. 99% of the stuff we give is meats, gift certificates, and stuff like that.
I'm good, thank you.
I should remind the board again, let's keep the questions on task here because the main issue that we're going to look at, we're looking at the facts and applying, do they meet the requirements for a special use permit? Anything outside of that cannot be admissible as evidence to weigh in and factor a decision for the board. I just want to make that clear.
Any other questions for Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Reading a lot of the comments that were mailed in to the Planning Board, it seems like the majority of the comments had an issue with the noise and the timing. How flexible would you be with decreasing your time? For instance, instead of 7:00 AM, would you be willing to go as early as 10:00 AM to allow some folks to sleep in, or maybe not as late into the evenings? How flexible would you be on timing?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's what this is all about. You know, when I first started this thing, that's what we did, is we canvassed the whole area and asked people what they thought about the timeframe, and that's how we came up with the time. Plus, the county has their certain guidelines too, so.
Have you spoken with any of your neighbors about this, and what were some of the things that you heard from them?
Really, I haven't heard anything. I mean, everything that I've heard is good because it is a charity, and we do help the kids. That's the main purpose.
The reason I ask is there was numerous folks who mailed in, and their main complaint was noise. So that's why I asked about the flexibility in your time and had you spoke with anybody concerned. It sounds like there's quite a few.
We've been doing this for four years or so. There is, I will tell you all this too, you've probably heard something about this. There's a gentleman somewhere around our area that shoots every Sunday afternoon, and he shoots a high-powered rifle, like a AK-47 or something, and everybody thinks it's us. We don't allow shooting on Sunday. Just thought I might, because I have heard some people tell me that, "We thought that was you, it's not us." Again, we just use shotguns. We don't allow pistols or, you know, long rifles, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, do you recreational shoot out there at all, other than when you're doing turkey shoot? Do you do any sport, just recreation shooting?
That's it. No.
No?
No.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Bailey? Okay, Mr. Bailey, you can be seated.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ray Sharp, please come forward. Please place your left hand on one of the bibles there and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, please stand in front of the podium. And for the record, state your name and address.
My name is Ray Sharp. I live at 183 Candy Road, Wayne, 32111.
And what is it that you would like the Planning Board to know?
Well, I'm a neighbor of Mr. Bailey's. My property is behind his shooting range, and mainly what I come for is to get some questions answered, like, is it going to be turkey shoot or a shooting range, hours of operation, and the berm behind it. I haven't been to his shooting range, so I don't know what it's like. I do know Mr. Bailey entirely, I mean, he's a neighbor, and I didn't check for, again, I just wanted some information, there's a reason I'm here.
And has the discussion so far yielded those answers for you?
Yes, sir, I have, and I agree with Mr. Bailey. We have people around us that do a lot of shooting. Myself, I thought it was his place, but after talking to him, I don't think it was his gun range it was shooting. Saturday afternoon, it sounded like a war going on behind my house. It was a high-powered rifle, and I'm afraid to walk back in on my property back in there with stuff like that, so, anyway. But I have no problem with the turkey shoot on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night because, you know, in the past, I have heard it, and it's not too loud for me. I don't know about the rest of the neighbors, but I can only speak for myself. Basically, that's all I've got to say.
Okay, well, we thank you for stepping forward and speaking to us.
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
If it were up to you, what hours of operation, if it were up to you, what hours of operation would you like to see if we were to grant our part of it?
The seven to 10 would be fine.
Thank you.
Normally, this is the Normally, this is the time where we give Mr. Bailey an opportunity for rebuttal, but it doesn't sound like there is any other than the comments that were submitted. So having concluded with the speakers, is there any discussion amongst the board? And bear in mind that as our county attorney has advised us, please make sure that the discussion is relevant to the facts only.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
Sure.
There's just some discrepancies in what we have. Do you change those now? Does Mr. Bailey understand that number eight is what it is?
I was just brought to bring that up. He, the turkey shoot requirements of the UDO require no larger than number eight shot and hours end at 10 o'clock. So technically, if he's going to ask for anything different from that, it would need to be a variance. He would need to vary the standards. It would need, your approval would be based on his request to vary those standards.
Question for staff. Does our decision supersede any type of variance that would come next if we're sort of narrowly deciding this? If he needs to change the hours, we don't do that, right, or can we?
No, you could limit the hours to later beginning times and earlier end times here with this permit. Does that make sense? And then, yeah, and then in which case you would be unlikely to grant variance for him to extend it to later.
Can we move to discussion? Mr. Chair, I really don't have a problem with granting the request, but I have some concerns that this is being done this late at night, you know, around houses and that it could cause the noise. I mean, I can only imagine that.
Well, he is, if I may, he is meeting the requirements for the noise ordinance. Noise ordinance says that he can make noise until 10 o'clock at night, so he is in compliance with that.
And I actually, and to add to that, I think that I have an issue with going all 12 months. I don't have a problem. He mentioned that he would really like to do this September through March, and I really don't have a problem with that. But the rest of the year, I'm not real keen on.
Again, if there was evidence pointing to it in that favor, you could condition the special use permit based on your concerns. It would be best to have clear reasoning for having done that.
And the reasoning is that if I lived near him and this was going on 12 months a year, I could almost bear it six months a year if we knew it was the.
So you'd basically be granting a seasonal permit.
Yeah.
But we don't have one, so this is the, you would be using this vehicle with that condition? This vehicle of a turkey shoot use?
Any other discussion by the board?
I agree with Julie with the timing. I think the time's a little early and a little late. I'd like to see those shrink. Outside of that, that's really the only recommendation I would include.
Mr. Chair, I would point out that that is the traditional times for 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM because people have to get home from work and then that's what they'll go out and do and eat, so. That's not a daytime event, so.
I understand.
Further discussion?
I guess I just wanted to kind of go back to one of the points that I had made too, that if I was an individual and I decided that on Friday, Saturday night that I wanted to shoot up until 10 o'clock with a high powered rifle, AK-47, you know, whatever you want to shoot. If that's not against the county, if it was, you know.
Well, there are restrictions and the sheriff's patrol would observe that activity to ensure that it was being done safely. There are distance, there are separation distances and berm requirements for private shooting as well. They're regulated by the sheriff.
But as far as noise, if all that were met, I guess, there's really nothing that could be done within the county. If an individual wanted to shoot every Friday or Saturday.
There are instances where if noise creates a disturbance, if it happens that the noise is so intense that it does create a disturbance, again, it would be something that the sheriff would make a determination on. Hope that helps with your.
Further discussion? Motion?
Chairman, do I make a motion to adopt this special use permit? And the following statements are required by Rockingham County UDO and the Rockingham County Plan and UDO Planning Board. My motion would be to approve this action consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. After reviewing the competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to prove the special use permit. That the user development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote public health safety and general law protection. The user development applies the well required regulations and standards of the ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. And that the user development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of continuous property. Or that the user development is publicly accessible. And that the user development conforms to the general plans for the land use development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter of the Rockingham County UDO. That's all.
Second?
I'll say.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. The application is approved by a vote of five to two. The next case for staff is to present to us is 2020-15. I've got so many papers up there, I don't know what to look at.
It's hard, isn't it?
Mike, I appreciate, we've varied our analysis statement from time to time and I think this one is nice and tight. What you read is appropriate. What I put underneath is basically suggestions just to get you thinking about the sorts of things that would apply to those findings. Not necessary to read, but just to give you some clarity about what you're looking for there, so. That was, we're in a good place there. This is a special use permit to allow a kennel for more than eight or eight or more domesticated animals. I've got to zoom back out to my. Located just outside Wentworth on a two acre track. Emily, I don't think, I think we're in the wrong.
Did I get it out of order?
No, there you are.
Oh, wait, I have to correct.
Yeah, our vicinity map wasn't. Anglin Mill Road, Stoneville. Again, there are standards, special use permit standards for a kennel. You've looked at kennels in the not so near, in the near past. This was a, generated from a neighbor complaint about the kennel. When we reached out to the neighbor, we offered them the option of coming into compliance by getting, requesting a special use permit. So again, the property owner has submitted a site plan. This just shows you, property is kind of a flag lot with a long, narrow access off of Anglin Mill. The kennel's located at the back of the property. The site would look as so with existing foliage acting as buffers around the kennel. Are there questions?
Could you put the aerial photo up for me?
Sure. Not to scale.
I understand.
If that helps a little bit.
Very good. Yes?
Are you able to tell us what the complaint was that brought this up?
I, no, I'm thinking if there's any part of that that we can, that we can share. The fact that I shared that it's a complaint at all is a little close to.
So the kennel has been in operation?
That I'm not sure of and is, I don't know if there is, if the applicant is here tonight. You can also ask the, our code enforcement officer if he's aware of how long it's been there.
Okay.
He's at the back of the room.
All right. Any other questions for staff? There's no one signed up to speak on this case, so I guess I would like to talk to Mr. Curry, Officer Curry.
Ben, do you mind answering a couple of questions about the kennel? Is it your case or Bryce's?
Anglin Mill Forest.
Do you know anything about it? How long they've been operating?
And I applaud Ben for being careful. If it's not his case, he really shouldn't try to represent it.
I understand.
And it means he hasn't spoken to the property owner, he hasn't been.
Is the applicant?
There's someone at the back of the darkroom.
Yeah, I'm the applicant.
Okay, you didn't sign up on the sheet. I think we have some questions for you.
I don't know that we can deny that. I mean, the sign up is for an orderly progress for a hearing, but if someone has appeared who wants to speak.
Oh, yeah, most certainly, especially if it's applicant who's appeared, has shown up. Yeah, absolutely give him the platform if he wants to so speak, under oath, I mean, under, yeah.
Yeah. So, and maybe it was just a miscommunication Paul about, but anyone who would like to speak needs to be given that opportunity.
Okay. So the applicant doesn't have to speak to us?
If he wants to, he definitely should be allowed that opportunity. Because he didn't sign up doesn't mean that he doesn't want to speak. You just have to ask.
Then I'll ask him. Mr. Shelton, did you care to speak to us?
Yes, sir, can I ask you a question?
Yes. Please come forward. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help ye God? Okay, if you would please take the microphone there. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Jason Shelton at 1801 Anglin Mill Road, Stoneville, North Carolina.
Okay. I guess what we're interested to know is if this is, does your application arise as a result of code enforcement? Or have you been operating the kennel and someone came to see you?
We've had just a few dogs and then lately we've got a couple more. And somebody called and complained and the animal control came out and checked. Everything was good, like it should be, clean. Everything was under control, but he didn't say nothing about I needed a special use permit. And then I guess somebody complained again, but the person who's complaining, I'm pretty sure I know who it is and they don't live around me anywhere. There's, I guess, an issue that we've had with them, an altercation that brought these complaints up because they're moving back and forth to my neighbors and we've had words with them for going in and out of our driveway. And I'm pretty sure that's who complained about the situation. But anyway, the code enforcement officer came out and told me I had to have a permit to have up to eight dogs, which I have eight commercial dogs that are breed and age. And so I went ahead and applied for the eight plus, just in case. They told me I could have up to 16 with my property, you know.
The size that it is, yeah. Yeah, there's a restriction on the amount of land you have to have for each dog. So I guess you meet the requirement up to 16, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got like 2.3 acres.
Oh, yes, I see it right here. Are there any questions for Mr. Shelton from the board members?
I have a question for Mr. Shelton. Mr. Shelton, you said that you had a couple of dogs and then you've had more dogs. How long have you had the eight dogs that meet the requirement for the special use permit?
Probably about a year. We had about, kept about three or four and then we kept a couple out of a litter to breed too when they got grown. And over the last probably year or so, then it kind of went up a little bit.
Do you anticipate keeping this amount of dogs for a long period of time?
No, I mean, it just fluctuates. I mean, like now, I've got a couple of young dogs coming on, you know, that we may breed and then some of the other stuff is getting kind of old, so at some point, you might have a transition till I can find homes, you know, for the other dogs and the older dogs and stuff and I rehome them. You know, it might go, a year I have 10 and then again, I might be back down to five for a couple of years. So that's why I wanted to go with eight plus, just to go ahead and be on the safe side so I wouldn't be, you know, out of compliance.
And your property sits, am I reading 900 feet off, how many feet off the road?
Yeah, about 950 feet off the road, somewhere in that area.
So you're kind of back in the woods, right?
Yeah.
He's almost a quarter of a mile out. Okay. Any other questions for, yes, Phillip?
Is the property fenced in so when they're out of their kennels, they can run around and stay frequently?
No, like I say, we're way back in the woods. I mean, there's trees all around us and fields. We never let anything out that we're not there with it to attend to them and stuff. You know, they never just run free on their own when we're not home. So we do have a fenced in lot for letting them out and running around in that, but, you know, if they get out in the yard or something like that too, we stay there with them. My wife, she don't work, so she's home, you know, all the time.
And my last question, is that a residence beyond the property? Is that a barn of some sort back? From where your house is, I guess.
Off to the left.
Off to the left, over this way?
You can't see it, but it would be to the left on the map there.
That's probably my uncle's, my uncle lives out beside of me out there. Yeah, that's my uncle's house out there. Yeah, he's fine with everything.
There we can see it.
There we go.
That's his carport or shed or whatever. He's about, just roughly estimating 200 feet away. And I do have privacy trees planted between me and him now, so there is a privacy buffer there between us.
Additional questions for Mr. Shelton?
These kennels, are they standalone kennels surrounded by a chain link fence or just without a chain link fence?
There's no chain link fence. On the land around me too, which is 35 acres that my uncle lives on, it's also my land, but the standalone kennel. But they're standalone kennels on treated floors.
Do you ever have any noise problems?
No. Never had no complaints, you know, to me from anybody.
And, and this may be irrelevant, but what breed, is it a particular breed?
It doesn't matter.
Well, miniature snouts is what I have. Miniature snousers, that's what we breed. My daughter's allergic to most things, so they don't shed, so that's how we got into miniature snousers.
Well, they all can do that. Any other questions for Mr. Shelton? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion by the board?
I'd like just to add a, add a point. It looks like we'll have to be careful in enforcing the number of dogs that are on the property. Mr. Shelton should understand that the maximum number of dogs you can have is...
16.
16, twice the eight that's allowed per acre. Yeah, and that's, it's a, and those include puppies, dogs, any, any kind of animal that is there, so... It includes any, any dog on the property.
We don't discriminate about age of dogs.
I think having, having said that, we should satisfy some of the details of the complaint and the noise.
I'm sorry?
Having, having said that, I think we should satisfy details of the, of what was out of compliance.
Yes.
And can I verify something? So when you say domestic animals, if somebody had three goats that counts, it's not necessarily 16 dogs if you have other domestic animals?
Domesticated, domesticated animals typically it would be a kennel of all one type of domesticated animal. But, yeah, there might be a mix of, of house goats and mini pigs and dogs and whatever. But, yeah, it's a total, total number. This number is associated with the kennel. Now, they may have, he might have private animals of his own that would not be contributing toward the number in the kennel. Just as part of the kennel operation is what we're talking about.
So, and we're just talking about the kennel operation, not the...
That's correct. And that is, that is a very slippery, slippery slope, thin ice, as it were. But visits to a facility will make it pretty clear. And based on the site plan and where the dogs are supposed to be, where the kennelled dogs are supposed to be located versus others, helps us to enforce that.
Further discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit in case number 2020-15. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Land Use Plan. After review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings. That the use or development is located, designed, proposed to be operated as to maintain the, or promote the public health, safety and general welfare. That the use or development complies with all required regulations, standards of the ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. And that the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated as to maintain or enhance the value of the contiguous property or that the use or development is a public necessity. And that the use or development conforms with the general plan's use of development of Rockingham County as embodied in the chapter of the Rockingham County UDO.
Well, before we second, I'd like to amend that motion to include a condition that this kennel be limited to 16 animals.
I mean, the condition is already present as part of the special use permit?
Okay, it's incorporated in the special use permit?
Yeah, yes, it is.
So it is, okay, I understand correctly. Second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote's unanimous and the special use permit is granted. Staff will now present us our next case, 2020-14.
This is a case, a request to build a wireless telecommunications facility. The, the request is for a special use permit as if it were a new facility because the additional height that they want to provide does qualify as requiring this special use permit. This is something that we consulted with the, our telecommunications consultant to determine. The property that, I think I'm going to get right to the aerial photograph. The tower, the existing tower is here on the site. He intends to add height to the existing tower, not put, not move it to a different location. It's important to note that the, our third party telecommunications consultant has a highly detailed technical review that we charge a $3,000 fee for him to go through. And it was my feeling with this, as well as the other special use permit request you have for a cell tower, that it was more appropriate to allow you to hear the case first and make a determination. It will, of course, be conditioned upon appropriate complete review by the consulting firm. And I would ask you to add that as a condition, should you decide to approve the permit.
Okay.
Are there questions from you?
Yes, I noticed the, in somewhere in this paperwork that the height is changing. Is this the one that's going up to 400 feet?
It's adding, yes, where the, over the total overall height will be 400 feet.
Okay. I'm looking at your map and I'm seeing Baker Cross Road. Is that 400, or is that road, will that be in the fall zone?
That is the part, that is what I'm talking about, the technical review from our third party consultant. It's a no-go if, if he finds any of those. See, and the reason why, it depends on the tower construction. It could be a collapse, a collapsed fall zone, which would be a great deal less than the, twice the tower height fall zone that would be required for that type of structure.
And I don't suppose you have any idea what type of construction it is?
I don't.
Okay. So that would be up to the consultant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely. So your, your decision will be based on, provided the consultant determines that it meets technical specifications, including fall zone?
Okay. Any questions for staff about this application?
Carrie, this, the map that you have pulled out, pulled up here, it looks like there's, it's pretty wide out. Most of them, it looks like the, it's, you're, you're far up. So how many square miles? I mean, it looks like the picture taken, the houses.
You're thinking about the scale of the picture and that, yeah, the property is, oh, thank you, 120, almost 127 acres of property. So it gives you some perspective about how far, that it is, it is a little out of scale. It's set back further than it appears.
Well, no, this is a scale map and it does have a scale reference on here.
But I, I mean, looking at the, this, realizing that this is 126 acres, the scale is difficult to digest, to see where it looks like. About 500 feet from the road.
Carrie, how long has the current hour been at this?
Since 2012.
Any other questions for staff? Let me see, do we have anyone? There's no one signed up to speak for this case. Is the applicant or anyone representing the applicant here? For Christian Planted? I'm not seeing any response from the audience. In that case, thank you, Carrie. And is there any discussion among the board?
So essentially, we're just, we don't know all the technicalities of everything. So we're just basically agreeing to approve of height difference.
Well, you're, yeah, you're agreeing that provided the tech...
The applicant is right here and he just told me he can't hear you guys. But if he, if he would like to ask a question, he is here and he came in after the sign machine.
Oh, okay.
This is Danny Hawkins right here.
What's it, what is his name, please?
Danny Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Hawkins, would you like to talk, speak about the...
I've got a hearing problem and I left my hearing aids at home.
Okay, first, you need to go to, place your left hand on one of the bibles and raise your right hand.
I'll stand by and help.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, if you would please stand over here.
I'm going to help if you, if he doesn't hear.
Okay, tell us your name and address.
Your name and address.
My name is William Danny Hawkins, 6704 Highway 8 South, Germantown, North Carolina.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hawkins? Is there anything special about this permit you'd like us to know?
Is there anything special about the permit you want them to know?
It's for Christian radio and we already running at 90 feet. We get up to 400, we'll get into Greensboro, be a good nice station for the county.
Do you, are, are you aware of what kind of construction the tower's going to be? Is it going to be a collapsible or...
Yes, sir, we put them up in other counties. As a matter of fact, we put one up in this county already.
He's asking if it's going to be a collapsible tower?
Oh, it'll, it'll be a, be a guide tower, that's what he's saying.
Carrie, is a guide tower, is a guide tower a tower that will collapse or will it fall to one side?
It will, it will have a fall zone. Again, I think it's, it's only fair to allow the technical consultant to review the, the plans, Mr. George, when we spoke with on the telephone.
Joey Wells, yes.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna have to review the drawings to make sure that it's feasible.
Yes, sir, we've had that in Raleigh. They've already done a structural analysis saying it'll work. And then we got to get them over in Virginia, they'll go through it. So it'll be, we want it right, we don't want it to fall.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're going to build it to where it'd be three others could be on, so. And that's in a pretty needed area over there for cell phones.
Any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
I have a question for Carrie. Should we table this till we find out from an engineer what the fall zone is going to be? Or the estimated...
I could just, I could just say, excuse me.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, you, we won't be permitting and the, and the consultant that we pay to review it for us will not permit it if it's, if the fall zone requirements aren't met. And I'm reluctant to table it so that he can move on and pay the fee that he'll have to pay for the consultant to make that determination is quite, quite a commitment before, before knowing if you're, if it's, if it's conceptually allowable.
Our, our practice has been up till now to go ahead and approve the thing, the application, but add the condition that the consultant has to review the plans and approve them before the application can take effect.
Carrie, based on that, what you're responding, is that something asked to add to the language?
Of the motion? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I believe we wrote it that way in the staff report, yes. The staff analysis and recommendations of the staff report has suggested conditions for you to add.
And that way you're, you're covering more than just the fall zone in this case. There's a lot more details that could make the project not feasible after all.
Carrie, is your recommendation to adopt all four of the, of the conditions?
Yes, it is. And Emily's just pointing out, I'm still, I still want the technical review to confirm this. Emily is suggesting that we, initial review is telling us that the, the fall zone is 110% of the height of the overall height. So the 500, given that it is indeed 500 feet from the road, it would be okay. But all of that has to be confirmed, surveyed and determined, absolutely.
So that would still fall under number one? The final approval would be subject to the technical specification, got it?
That's the consultant's report. They have to pay $3,000 for that. Thank you, sir. Any discussion amongst the board members? Excuse me.
Thanks for letting us do this, a little unconventional, but it worked. Do you have any other questions for me?
I don't think so, Carrie.
Where, where in the, in the comment section of the one floor that you mentioned, is that just an additional comment at the end?
Yes. I would list that, list the, the motion as suggested. And, and actually, you're, you're, you would state the motion, I, I recommend approval when you, if that is your motion, with these conditions. And then your analysis is, is stating how that's justified.
If there's no discussion, further discussion by the board, we're ready for a motion. Phillip?
Planning Board has reviewed the stuff that you permit, identified as no collagen or statue, 153A, 341 and 153A, 342, as required by the Rockingham County UDO. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the planning board approves this act, our action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Land Use Plan. After review of competent material and substantial evidence in this record, the board makes the following findings for the forward conclusions necessary to approve the special use permit. User development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so that to maintain and promote the public health, safety and general welfare. That the user development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. That the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of continuous property. That the user development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter in the Rockingham County UDO. And also of the additional comments for approval. The final approval of the special use permit is subject to the approval of technical specifications and details by the county's wireless telecommunications consultant. The applicant must comply with the site plan approved by and any other conditions imposed by the planning board. The applicant is responsible for obtaining and complying with all required permits and approvals. The applicant must follow all the required requirements for a special use permit which are listed in the Rockingham County UDO.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The vote is unanimous to approve the special use permit pending the conditions. Our next case. Our next case for staff to present is 2020-13. A special use permit requested by Vertical Bridge.
This is a somewhat similar case with conditions subject to the review of the application by our third-party telecommunications consultant. There we are. This property is located just, just east of Reedsville. It's actually the Yanceville Fire Station hoping to lease a portion of their property to a telecommunications facility for the provision of emergency operations as well as commercial use. Just pointing out that the use of cell towers by public only, for public only facilities is exempt, but since the intent is also to use it for commercial cell tower service, they have, they are subject to the special use permit. The proposal is to locate the tower on a block, a leased area here at the back of the property. I'll mention that in order for this cell tower to be located in this place, there are also a couple of vari, a variance that is going to be before you when you adjourn and reconvene as a board of adjustment. So this, this, should you decide to approve it, will be subject not only to the review of the consultant's review by the consultant, but will be subject to the successful approval of variances. And I ask you, it's difficult, but I ask you to look at them as two separate cases, putting the variance aside until after you've looked to determine whether or not you recommend it feasible at all for this location.
This is the one where the fall zone extends well out into 158.
The applicant is here to, the applicant's claim is that the, that this is a collapsible style tower that would not, their, the claim is that the fall zone will not exceed this yellow leased area. Again, subject to consultant review. And I, I do know that the applicant is here. They, they were here last time and they're very patiently waiting their turn.
Yes, go ahead.
It states that staff recommended to not, is that correct?
There were concerns from, from staff about the, the tight location, the proximity of another tower, just very, very literally reading the, the letter of the ordinance. It was, it came that way. There are, this is often a sort of a touch point, but staff's feelings are never hurt when you, when you either follow or don't follow a staff recommendation. Our, our recommendation is very surface level, it follows the letter or doesn't follow the letter. And it's based on the, the tightness of the, of the suggested area.
But it, but it's not unusual to have multiple towers in a small area.
No, it is, if there's another tower nearby, there is a co-location requirement where if another tower is available, that additional antennas should be prioritized to that tower before a new one. But the applicant has, is going to be giving you information about why they think that the other tower is not feasible.
I, I read up on that, so. Okay, is there any questions for staff by the members? Okay, Carrie, thank you. Let me see here. Variants.
The applicant has submitted a, a site plan. What would be best?
Where is the?
Uh, sorry.
I don't seem to have a sign up sheet for this case. Wait a minute. Maybe they're stuck together.
There you go.
There should be one there. I know there was one. Here on the tower.
Okay, I've got it. Oh, that's the variance. Where's the? Okay, I'm straight now. We have a lot of cases tonight, which obviously means a lot of paper. Okay, is Mr. Barker here, please?
Yes, sir.
I know you've been waiting patiently. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, if you could, please take the podium. And for the record, state your name and address.
My name is Doug Barker, 304 Spring Water Trail, Woodstock, Georgia, 30188.
And what is it that you would like the planning board to know about your application?
You know, I wanted to start a little bit with, with how we kinda got to this property. We, we were sent out here for Verizon Wireless to provide the coverage that they're required by, provided by their FCC licensing and their desire to better serve the citizens and businesses of this county. Initially, Verizon came out, we identified the tower that's existing across the street, and attempted to co-locate on that tower. Unfortunately, the tower, the tower owner is also a wireless provider and it's unfeasible, they're making it unfeasible for co-location. The market rates and the timeframes, they just stand to make more money without allowing Verizon onto that tower at this, at this juncture. Additionally, it's an old tower, so there's structural upgrade costs associated with it that just, just make it unfeasible for Verizon to co-locate on.
Is this the competitor's tower you're talking about now?
It is, it is. It is a US Cellular owned structure. The, after we identified that tower is not available for co-location, we started going through the ordinance and trying to find properties around that, that kinda meet the spirit of the code. We went through the priority list. Obviously, colocations are the, the first priority. And there's not, within the geographic area, there's not a, a structure that they could, they could actually co-locate on. Secondly, county-owned properties. Your ordinance actually allows, if, if the fire station were county-owned, I would be exempt from the zoning process. We, we sought the county, we sought county-owned properties, there's none in the area. This was the closest thing to that spirit of, of county-owned properties and the money going back toward the community that we could find in the area. And the, the high tension power lines adjacent to it just, just kinda led us to believe that that was a great location for, for the structure. Third most favorable is industrial properties, there are none in the area. And fourth most favorable, commercial or OI, which is what we are on. The property is zoned OI. So between it being a fire station, the money going back to the community, which is something Vertical Bridge is, is very adamant on if it's a possibility in any of the searchings we go into, we thought this was the, the most favorable location and more fit the spirit of the code than, than any other properties that we could find in the area. The, the tower emits no noise, no odors, no fumes. It's a silent neighbor. We have engineered this tower and we've submitted engineered letters and we, as a part of the permit and, and the review by the third party, we'll go ahead and submit the, the full tower drawings. This tower is designed to fall within a 50-foot radius. So it's, it is a tower designed to collapse upon itself. It's overdesigned everywhere except for the stress points that, that will allow it to collapse upon itself in the event of a failure. We don't see them fail, but in the unlikely event, it is designed to collapse upon itself. And we have stamped engineered letters and, and designs submitted in the record to, to show that. We didn't wanna be a bad neighbor. We realize that we're pretty close to property lines. Vertical Bridge and the fire station doesn't wanna be a bad neighbor to anyone. We have reached out to the adjacent property owner, Mr. Woodson Smith. Mr. Smith is here tonight. He is here in, in favor of our application. Trying to be a good neighbor, we, we went out and we met with Mr. Smith and, and he is not opposed to the tower. With that, I'd answer any questions that the board may have and-
Any questions for Mr. Barker? Okay, thank you. If there's anyone that objects, Mr. Barker, you'll be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Matt, I can't quite read your last name.
Grugan.
Oh, okay. If he would, please, okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Matt Grugan, 2047 Harmony Drive, Canton, Georgia, 30115. I am the applicant, I'm with Vertical Bridge. I just wanted to state for the record, Mr. Chair, that the applicant was here and in attendance to answer any questions for us specifically. So that was it, I just wanted to have that opportunity to say we were here in attendance.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Grugan? Okay. Mr. Barker, did you say there was another gentleman that was gonna speak? Or is he not here?
No, sir. He, he is the adjacent property owner, is here if anybody would wanna ask any questions of him. I, I just wanted to point out that we did meet with him and they are not in, in opposition to the-
He's waiting in the back with the lights off. You did, Mr. Smith, you didn't sign the roster. Do you care to speak to us?
No, sir. I've got, I think, all the information I need. Leading to these two gentlemen, and I'm not opposed.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst the board members?
And I guess just a question, if I just, I'm right here, if I can just ask it. But just to clarify-
Well, he needs to come up to the microphone.
So I guess, so this tower will be used as, as emergency services for the, for the area as well as having some better cell phone reception.
Sure, as a part of the agreement with the fire station, the, the fire station requested, they, they stated that the emergency communications in the county, they're going through an upgrade, that sort of thing, and requested space on the tower. As a part of our agreement with them, they have space on the tower at no charge to them for the, the lifetime of the structure.
And I guess essentially they're benefiting from all this as well.
They absolutely are. They're benefiting from the lease revenue, they benefit from additional carriers coming on, and, and then the, the benefit of the, the tower there for, for their use.
I was just gonna point out that one of the things that our third-party consultant will review is the, is the, the idea of feasibility for co-location. And he will help verify the, the reasoning behind that and that that satisfies and justifies the, the idea that it's not feasible to co-locate.
If I don't mind, I do that with my question quick here.
Sure.
From, from looking at, I know it doesn't meet the UDO, but what, but what was the findings or what was maybe the staff's thoughts on the towers?
The main, the main concern was the co-location issue. Besides the, I mean, there were a lot of discussion about the, the ability for the, for the tower to collapse into that small area and the variances that will come before you later. But I think the main, the main reason was the, the co-location ability. Again, this does give the applicant an opportunity to say that it's not feasible and for our consultant to verify that.
When you're saying co-location, are you referring to the, the tower across the road?
The tower that they tried to, to locate on first, correct?
So Carrie, if, if we were to entertain an approval, which is not consistent with your recommendations, are there, you didn't offer any, any recommendations to include?
Well, we did offer, we did recommend conditions that should you decide to approve the permit, the backside of the staff report has similar conditions to the last case that you heard with the addition of the variance. When, and that, what that means is that staff would, would feel comfortable if your approval were to include those conditions?
Any other discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that the board approve the special use permit and adopts the following statements as required by Rockingham County UDO and North Carolina General Statute 153A-341 and 153A-343. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans in the UDO, the planning board approves case 2020-13. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land use plan. After reviewing the competent material and substantial evidence in this record, the board makes the following findings for more conclusions necessary to approve this special use permit. The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and gender welfare. That the user development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all applicable regulations. That the user development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of continuous property, or that the use or development is a public necessity, and that the use and development conform with general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter in the Rockingham County UDO, and that it has to be approved by technical review by a third party. That's all.
Other conditions?
And other conditions set forward by the planning staff.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There is no opposition, the vote's unanimous, and a special use permit is granted. I would like to make a general consent motion that unless there's any objections, that we temporarily adjourn the planning board so that we can convene the board of adjustment. Not hearing any objections, so moved. The June 22, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment meeting shall come to order. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any variance case being heard by the Board of Adjustment must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or a presiding board member. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Our first case for the Board of Adjustment is a variance request from Vertical Bridge, Staff will present us the particulars of this case.
At least we put them back to back, more or less. That was the intent.
At least we know the speakers.
Yes, exactly. The special use permit that was just granted for this facility is conditioned, one of the conditions that you've granted it with is the approval of this requested variance. We know where the tower is. We have a more detailed site plan. The variance is, the variance that's being requested is to the setback of the tower on the property. The setback is a distance equal to the fall zone from any residential structure, property lines, and/or recorded easements or right-of-ways. So, guides and accessory facility support structures must satisfy the underlying zoning district setback requirements. So, there are two different setback requirements, the tower itself and the zoning district. Monopole towers may have a 20% reduction in the required setbacks, but in no case shall the setbacks be less than those required for the underlying zoning districts. And the applicant's variance, sorry, the applicant's application is very clear about what they're asking to vary. They're asking to vary the lot size, have the amount of lot size that we're asking to vary. Ah, here we go. The minimum lot size for the underlying zoning district is 30,000 square feet and the minimum setback of the underlying zoning district is 25 to the rear, tend to the sides. So, the variance is asking to reduce the setback to five feet between the fall zone and the property lines and asking for a minimum lot size of 6,360 feet. I'm not sure what you're... Yeah, this is a, this is a map that, assuming the fall zone is different than what has been, what the applicant is claiming, this would be the fall zone of a non-collapsible guide wire tower. So, I think the point here is that it's very important for that technical review to happen and for both the special use permit and variance to be dependent on that verification of data, which again is a $3,000 investment on the part of the applicant, my decision to allow them to request the conceptual approvals before making that investment.
Okay.
Carry it up to verify. This is the, we're looking at a zoomed-in version.
That's correct, of the yellow block that was, yep. And I can show what Mr. Stone was just talking about is this, this section at the back of the property has been magnified here to show you the site.
Any questions for staff? Phillip, you look like you want to ask one.
Well, I guess to verify that the neighbor who's here is on the side and the back.
He is surrounding on the, yeah, on the side, both the back and the side.
Mr. Barker? Sorry, we've got to do this again. Different board. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, please tell us your name and address again.
Doug Barker, 304 Spring Water Trail, Woodstock, Georgia 30188.
Thank you. And as far as the variance is concerned, is there, what is it that you want a Board of Adjustment to know?
Just really the engineering behind the structure. These towers are designed, none of them are designed to fall like a tree. You pay more money for enhanced designs on them to make them collapse upon themselves. And that's what Vertical Bridge has done here. They've put the money out to engineer a tower and design a tower that will collapse upon itself and is designed to collapse. I misspoke earlier. I said 50 feet. It's actually, I went back and reviewed the letter. It's designed to collapse within 45 feet is the actual tower design. And those are what we have submitted, the drawings, and will go before the technical review as well by the third party. It's designed to collapse upon itself. That's really, really the bulk of it.
Okay. The, excuse me, the variance you're asking for, for the lot size, is quite large. It's 23,600 square feet. If the hypothetically, and you may not be able to answer this question, and it's probably one best left for the consultant, if the tower were to collapse, do you think it would all be contained within the 6,360 square feet that you're asking us to agree to?
That is what we've engineered the tower to fall within, is a 60 by 60-foot area, actually 45-foot by 45-foot area, is what the tower is designed to fall within.
Are there any other questions from the board members for Mr. Barker?
Let me, if you don't mind, I'll point out that the definition of lot size is leased area, the minimum lot size or leased area must equal the fall zone or the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning district, which is, the interpretation, of course, is that the lot that's going to be leased is small. The lot, the overall lot upon which that leased area sits does meet the underlying zoning district requirements, but because of the definition of lot size, that is, this variance is required.
Okay, understood. Any questions for Mr. Barker, Phillip?
Since there is additional space on the lot, was there any, was there any reason it had to be situated exactly where it was on the lot? Was there other underlying issues that...
So, on the other side of the lot, there are high-tension power lines that cross. We technically can be right up against the high-tension power lines. Be honest with you, boards don't like us to be up against high-tension power lines. So, we opted to move over to the other side, speak with the adjacent property owners, and try to work it out that way.
But could, I mean, is there any way to see if it's on the far right? Is there any deal on shifting it inwards? I mean, if we got a little bit off of, from the 25-foot variance to the line?
You're asking to shift it further off the property line toward the...
I was just, that's one of the variance items.
So, the, there is a large portion of this lot that is used for medevac. Part of the application, originally our access road was going in through the existing parking lot. Currently, where they landed the helicopter for medevac, there, it's going to be a lot easier for them to use our access road to get personnel down there and get vehicles down there to evacuate people out. So, they asked us to move our access road and redesign so that it would make it more feasible and easier for them to be able to do that, and that is another kind of design.
So, the request was really almost with the fire department as...
Yes, sir.
More centered than actually.
Additional questions for Mr. Barker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Grogan, are you pretty much going to...
Just for the record. If I have to, I...
Okay, yes, you signed up, so I guess who you will. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustment on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you'll need to state your name and address, please.
Yep, Matt Grugan, 2047 Harmony Drive, Canton, Georgia 30115. Just again, representative of Vertical Bridge. I am an employee. I am the applicant. Just wanted to state for the record that we are here to answer any questions at staff.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Grogan? Any discussion by the board?
I'll just make some comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I think the very obvious things that I want to comment, but I do, the enhanced road that this is going to provide for the fire department is going to help enhance cell service for the citizens, the emergency communications upgrade, and the increased revenue that this fire department definitely is.
Oh, yeah.
Are things we ought to consider.
For good discussion?
I'll second your statement.
Okay.
I was going to say that, but I thought it was off-topic.
Do we need a, oh, we do need a motion, please.
I think you seconded my comment.
I'll second your comment.
Not, not...
Okay, no, we need a motion now.
Mr. Chair, the planning board has reviewed the variance and adopts the following statements as required by the Rockingham County UDO. After review of competent material and substantial evidence on the record, the planning board approves case number 2020-12. The board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve a variance. It's a necessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance. It shall not be necessary to demonstrate that in the absence of the variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property such as location, size, or topography. Hardships resulting from personal circumstances as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or the general public may not be a basis for granting the variance. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner in the act of purchasing the property with knowledge that circumstances exist that may justify the granting of the variance. It shall not be regarded as self-creating hardship. And the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. The Board of Adjustment has also determined that variance will not extend the area, expand non-conforming use of land, change the district boundaries shown by the zoning map, impair any adequate supply of light, air, or adjacent property, materially increase the public danger of fire, materially diminish or impaired establishment property values within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And Carrie, do we need to insert the findings of the...
No, this, the variance stands alone and then, of course, satisfies one of the conditions of the special use permit. The verification of the evidence is still, well, no, it would be good to add a condition that the third-party consultant will verify the evidence presented by the applicant.
Is that covered in the special use permit?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that part covered in the special use permit?
It is, but it might be also an abundance of caution to mention that in the variance itself.
With the additional recommendation that findings from the consultant are adhered to...
Can the same report from the consultant be used for both?
Yes.
All right. Otherwise, he's got to spend three grand twice.
We won't ask, we won't ask for that.
And my motion is there.
Yeah, it can be one, I just want to make sure that we're, that it's clear what that report is going to be doing.
Okay. Do we have a second to Julie's motion? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The vote was unanimous in support of the request for a variance, and it is adopted.
I know Emily will be in touch with you about getting the request for the report itself, so we, so you can get that moving.
Our next case for the Board of Adjustment is a request for a variance, case number
This is a variance to request a, to vary the minimum lot size for residential, for the residential protected zoning district. There is, there are two homes existing on one parcel in this area, and the property owner wishes to separate the property into two unique parcels, which would actually bring it into compliance with our one lot, one single-family residence zoning code. This slide shows you lot sizes in the area for comparison. It is staff's opinion that this would actually bring this area into better compliance with the requirements of the zoning code by allowing the minimum lot size to be reduced.
Any questions for staff?
Here, I guess just a verification that both have existing septic systems to share a well. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. They have their own, they have their own system, and the Environmental Health Department has approved the shared well.
I missed your last comment.
I said the Environmental Health Department has approved the shared well. Should you approve this variance, the property owner will need to plat the two lots, and so the, any kind of easements that are required to share that well will be put into place at that time. They'll have, the environmental health will have review of the plat.
And if they so choose to do so, is there enough room for them, for one of them, the opposite of where the existing well is now, to drill a well inside? Is that possible? I know that might not be...
I don't know because of the separation distance from the septic systems. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if that's a possibility or not. And you're getting to know me better, I'm not going to make a lot of promises like that for something that I don't know.
We'll say that we, when I consulted with the environmental department with this, they were not concerned about the well, so I didn't even ask them that question. So, I'm not sure what their answer would be.
I think as long as it's platted with...
They'll have review of the plat, even though it's just a two-lot subdivision.
The idea of that was this is fairly common, and I think lots like this, up to, I want to say it's like 10 houses can share a well. It's definitely more than two. I confidently say more than two houses can share a well, and it is common apparently.
When, when you get to a certain point, it has to be built to state community well standards, to public well standards. But again, we'll have... But again, we'll have, we'll have them evaluate the plat for us and give us those comments.
Seems to me we had a case on the TRC not long ago where this was an issue, the community well.
There are several, just about every major subdivision that you're seeing in the TRC has community wells on it, and they're built to those standards and subject to drawdown
But this doesn't qualify as a community well.
Yeah.
Further questions for staff? Thank you, Carrie. This request was made by Brandy Mills, is she here? No, no applicant present. I did read somewhere, just a point of information, did read somewhere in this application is that the concern is to be able to convey the property, and in looking at the map that Carrie showed us, with the different lots on it, I counted two on the same side of the street that have .3-plus acres, and two on the opposite side of the street that have the same amount of land, so personally, I don't see a difficulty with granting this variance request, but I'll leave it to the members to decide or discuss it.
I think it would be a hardship not to approve it.
Wouldn't be able to convey the property without this, so...
And the homes were built before the minimum lot sizes were established.
Right.
Chances are that's how the two to the right, that's exactly what happened there at some point in time.
You know, I haven't seen the original plat, but this speaks of like a 25-foot, several plat sections that were purchased in groups of five or 20 or whatever, so it was probably originally platted for much smaller lots than even this.
Motion?
I'll do the motion. The planning board has reviewed the variance and adopts the following statements as required by the Rockingham County UDO. After review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the planning board approves case number 2020-05. The board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve the variance. Unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of this ordinance, it should not be necessary to demonstrate that in the absence of a variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as location, size, or topography. Hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or the general public, may not be the basis for granting of variance. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner, the act of purchasing property with knowledge that circumstances exist that may justify the granting of a variance, shall not be regarded as a self-created hardship. Four, the request of variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. The Board of Adjustment also, has also determined that the variance will not extend an area or expand a non-conforming use of land, change the district boundaries shown on the zoning map, impair any adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, materially increase the public danger of fire, materially diminish or impair the established property values within the surrounding area, in any other respect impair the public health, safety morals, and general welfare.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. The vote is unanimous, and the application for variance is adopted. The chair moves at this time that we adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting so as to reconvene the planning board.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. The motion carries, and the Board of Adjustment is now adjourned. The June 22, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board is back in session. At this time, do we have any old business to discuss? Do we have any old business?
There is no old business, but I do have to just comment, I think there are new ones.
Okay, then, new business?
The state's overhaul of the planning and zoning statutes have just been finally adopted by the governor since several years. The legal community initiated review of the ordinances, which are different from counties and cities. This is a consolidated ordinance, it's all county and city ordinances, one new statute. It's been, like I said, it's been years in the making, very, pretty flexible, as we call it, for us, just that we are in a some conflict right now with the government, with the UDO, and we need to incorporate all the changes.
Okay.
It's a big deal for the mayor, and attorneys, because it's just, instead, you have to overhaul since early '80s, that wasn't even completely overhauled. And I'd be sure to brief you on any, you know, potential changes that may be, we're in, we're in good shape.
Any other new business, Carrie? Any other new business?
Carrie, do you have an update on the timeline for the...
For the UDO and planning... It's still scheduled for February, March of next year.
It's still scheduled, sorry about that, for February, March of 2021, which is, which is good, we have until the 1st of July, 2021, to incorporate the new statutes. So, the consultant has started the land use plan, made a presentation, has started the reorganization of the UDO, that's taken quite a bit of effort just to put it into a more logical organizational format, and the committee will meet for the second time talking about substance of the UDO next month. They'll be meeting to talk about more details, and I can start sharing substance with you, not, there really isn't anything yet. That's all I have.
Who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?